All right, good evening and welcome to the December 1st, 2025 meeting of the City of Pacifica Planning Commission. This meeting is called to order. Let's have a roll call, please.
All right, Vice Chair Berman is absent. Commissioner Devine is absent. Oh, Commissioner Ferguson?
Present.
Commissioner Godwin?
Present.
Chair Hauser?
Present.
Commissioner Redfield?
Present.
And Commissioner Davis?
Present.
All right, Commissioner Ferguson, can you lead us in the salute to the flag, please?
Absolutely.
Pleasure leading to the flag in the United States where it stands. One mission, the ground, individual, liberty, justice.
Thank you. Okay, so before we get into administrative business, any member of the public wishing to make a public comment on any item should complete a speaker card, one of the yellow ones that looks like this, and bring it to the front and hand it to staff. On the card, please indicate the agenda item on which you wish to speak or oral communications for items not on the agenda. Members of the public may also participate in the meeting via Zoom or the dial-in, which is shown on the screen. When it's time to raise your hand, either press the raised hand function in Zoom or star five if dialing in by phone. I will call each speaker, whether in person or by dial-in, for their public comment opportunity. Please be advised that public meetings are a limited public forum, meaning that there are rules for commenting at these meetings. Comments on non-agendized items must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city, and comments on agendized items must relate to that specific item. If comments do not fall into one of these categories, the city will provide you with a second warning to stay within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city or on topic. If the warning is not followed, I will direct the city clerk to cut off the microphone, and throughout this warning system, I will seek the assistance of the Assistant City Attorney in identifying comments not related to the agenda item or not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. So that will take us to our administrative business. I do not have any comments on administrative business. Are there any raised hands for the administrative business?
There are no raised hands.
Okay, perfect. So then we will close public comment and move to approve the order of agenda. Do I have any takers?
I move to approve. The agenda is noted.
I'll second.
Okay, please vote.
I think we're still waiting.
Okay, great. There we go.
Try that.
Do you want to, let's reset that?
It's just the wrong one for Daniela first.
Let's reset it for the record. We can vote again. Not big stakes here, but okay, we'll vote again. All right. Well, this is an interesting one. That was supposed to be a yes.
Do we want to do the yes?
Third time's a charm.
Okay.
This is going to be a great meeting. I can tell already. Okay. Perfect. All right. Got the kinks out.
That motion was made by Commissioner Ferguson, seconded by Commissioner Davis, and that motion passes unanimously.
All right. Does anyone have comments on the minutes from last meeting? And if not, would someone like to make a motion?
Just, I just had a couple corrections real quick. In the minutes, it states on page four, states minutes of meeting held on September 15th, 25. And it should have been November 17th, I believe. Also, the, on page five, was the designation of the liaison, which was corrected in the connect with Pacifica, but it was dated the eighth in the record. And it's actually tomorrow, the second.
Thank you. I do want to note that at the time of the meeting, the hearing for Crespey was scheduled for November, or for December 8th. And so that is on the agenda tonight to designate, to redesignate a liaison.
So Commissioner Redfield, do you want to make a motion on the minutes with your first edit?
Make a motion that we accept the minutes as edited.
I'll second that. Please vote. Okay.
Right, that motion was made by Commissioner Redfield and seconded by Chair Hauser, and that motion passes unanimously.
Okay. So because this meeting has moved, Director Updegrave has asked if Commissioner Devine can participate remotely tomorrow, but we have not heard back. So since we do need a liaison for this, I would love to ask if we could have someone volunteer as a backup. I know it's tomorrow. I would very much appreciate it. Okay, I got a no.
I'll go ahead and do it.
Commissioner Redfield?
Yep, tomorrow.
Okay. So Director Updegrave, Commissioner Redfield will be our alternate. Thank you very much. All right. So then let's move on to oral communications. And let me just see if I have any speaker cards for this. Okay, this portion of the agenda is available to public to address the Planning Commission on any item within our subject matter jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. I do not have any speaker cards. Do I have any raised hands on Zoom or the phone?
There are no raised hands.
Okay, then we will close oral communications and keep on talking. We do have a consent item. We have two consent items. Would anyone like to poll the consent items or make a motion?
I move we approve consent.
Okay.
Yeah, I can second. Do we have to move separately for items one and two?
We do not have to move separately, but we do have to take public comment, which I skipped. And I do, sorry, guys. I do not have comments on the consent calendar. Do we have any raised hands on the consent calendar?
There are no raised hands.
Okay, then I will open and close public comment on the consent calendar. And then back to Commissioner Ferguson's question. No, the consent item can be, the consent calendar can be approved unanimously as long as it does not, is this on the consent calendar? No. As long as no one has polled an item.
In that case, I second.
All right, let's all please vote on the consent calendar.
Okay, that motion was made by Commissioner Davis and seconded by Commissioner Ferguson, and that motion passed unanimously.
Okay. And that takes us to continued public hearings. This is file number 2018058. Site development permit PSD-83818 and tree permit TP424 for construction of an approximately 3,180 square foot single-family residence with an approximately 668 square foot attached three-car garage and associated improvements on approximately 26,055 square foot undeveloped lot located approximately 330 feet east northeast of the intersection of Rockaway Beach Avenue and Bayview Road. May we please have a staff report?
Thank you, Chair Hauser, and good evening, Commissioners. I'm Samantha Updegrave, Community Development Director, and I am presenting tonight on behalf of the project planner who is unable to attend. The project before you is a proposal for a new single-family home on Bayview Road, Calera Terrace. The project site is approximately 26,000 square feet and is vacant with a general plan designation of low-density residential and a zoning designation of residential, single-family residential hillside, or R1H. The surrounding land uses include residential development to the west along Bayview Avenue into the south and southeast along Rockaway Beach Avenue. The project consists of a two-story, 3,100-square-foot residence with a 668-square-foot three-car attached garage. The project is, or, sorry, the residence would be accessed from Bayview. The access from Calera Terrace is not feasible due to the steep slope, and it would require constructing the full street and involve substantial grading. The building placement and the overall site design was really largely shaped by the fire access requirements to the site. The driveway, including the need for that Hammerhead fire turnaround. So the driveway and Hammerhead were designed with extensive input from an approval by the North County Fire Authority. And as you can see, it occupies a pretty significant portion of the land, leaving very little room for modification. So the home is cited in the most feasible location on the lot to meet these and all the other requirements. The, the project also requires the removal of, oops, the removal of protected Monterey pine. I'm so sorry. You know what? I think I have the wrong, I think I'm looking at a different presentation. If I could just have one moment?
Of course.
To resettle, I'm sorry.
And we appreciate that you're stepping in for the project planner. Thank you, Director Updegrave. And this will give the Commissioners time to review the leave behind that was given to us at the start of the meeting.
Thank you so much for, for your patience. The internet is being very slow. Okay, thank you. We are back on track. The project does require a removal of a protected Monterey pine near the northeast corner of the site and an additional protected pine that is dead. So in accordance with the municipal code, four new Monterey pines would be planted at that two-to-one ratio for the protected trees that are being removed. The site would also include approximately 3,900 square feet of new landscaping with 11,248 square feet of the lot to remain undisturbed. The proposed project conforms with all of the applicable zoning standards, specifically height, setback, lot coverage, and off-street parking. So just to kind of step through the project, at the last time we were here, the commission had asked for the setbacks to be shown in the elevations in order to help visualize the required building setbacks relative to the home's scale. And so this is showing here, there's pretty substantial setbacks. The home does step down the hillside with tiered retaining walls following the southwest-facing slope. Here's another view of that. And just to orient within the structure itself, the upper level has about 2,400 square feet, includes the main entry, living areas, and the three-car garage with stairs and an elevator down to the lower floor. The lower level has about 1,500 square feet with three bedrooms, full baths, a play area, and laundry. And then the primary bedroom is slightly stepped down, creating more variation in the roof line. And the lower floor shifts slightly. And both levels feature wraparound balconies. The commission had also wanted to see more renderings of the project. So here's a rendering from Bayview. And another, another view from, oh wait, this one's from Rockaway. It's not changing. And from Rock, no, yeah, and then this one is the one from Rockaway. The commission, following the April 20, or at the April 1st, 2024 Planning Commission hearing, where this project originally came, the Planning Commission had several follow-up items. And so we just wanted to briefly summarize how each has been addressed. I feel like my slides are out of order. Is that showing? Okay, thank you. So the applicant did submit a new geotechnical report that was dated July 2024. It represented an independent investigation and also evaluated the previous report from Summit Engineering. And the updated report concluded that there were no unusual circumstances. And staff reviewed all of those materials and can confirm that the project remains exempt under the CEQA guidelines for new construction and conversion of small structures, and that the unusual circumstances exception to the exemption do not apply. There were also questions regarding site drainage. So the drainage has been updated so that 95% of the new impervious surface will drain by gravity toward Bayview Road, and only 4% will go into the detention system and be pumped to the top of the driveway. And I know there was concern about runoff toward the rear of the property, and under the current design, it would create, have less runoff than under the existing conditions on the vacant lot. Regarding erosion control measures, grading would not occur during the rainy season. Erosion control measures would include chain-link fencing with straw bale dykes and silt fencing at the front and side of the site. A temporary drain will collect incidental runoff at the base of the hill and pump it upward as needed. And drainage improvements will be installed alongside the retaining walls to ensure site stability. Further, the applicant is required to follow all the recommendations in the geotechnical report and required best management practices. And so with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission find the project exempt from CEQA, approve the site development permit and tree removal permit to construct a 3,100-square-foot single-family residence with the, with the attached three-car garage and, and associated improvements. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and the applicant also has a presentation.
All right. I think if no one objects, shall we move to the applicant's presentation? Okay, I'm seeing head nods. So is the applicant here? Hi, Mr. Chavarria. So you'll have 10 minutes, and then if you'd like, you can have up to three minutes of rebuttal after a public comment.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners and staff members. Thank you. My name is Javier Chavarria with JC Engineering. I've been about 40 years here in Pacifica and done quite a few projects in town. I have prepared a presentation, but I think Samantha did an amazing job pointing out each one of the concerns that you have. So I'm going to switch things around, and I'm going to try to give you more of an explanation of where we are and why we are here. The project basically started in 2018 when the property was purchased, and the original application was submitted in October of that year. Immediately after we submitted, we contacted the fire department because we knew that there was an issue with the access. We only had a 12-foot access into the parcel. So the fire marshal at the time said, "It's okay to have a 12-foot access as long as you build with the mountain fire code and do an enhanced fire sprinkler system." Along those lines, we submitted, and we proceeded along those lines. I think something that is important to understand is that the parcel originally had a 25-foot access to Bayview. I'm not sure how or why the previous owners granted a planting easement to the neighbor in the north side of that parcel. It was a 13-foot easement, leaving only that 12-foot access, which created the problem of accessibility later on. After we submitted, staff came back as normal with comments regarding coverage, architecture, et cetera. But the main point became the issue of the fire truck turnaround. Fire Department said, "Yes, we will approve the project with a 12-foot access, but you need to put a fire truck turnaround inside the property." And that basically dictated how we designed the building. We tried to wrap the building around the fire truck turnaround. We tried to escalate the building down the hill to minimize the amount of export and therefore prevent impact to the neighborhood by putting so many trucks on the street. 60% of the excavation that we will do, it will be occupied, it will be used on-site to backfill those sections and create, create the tiers of the building. We were still working into that. COVID came about. We went into a waiting period. Finally, the middle of the year, we had a meeting with staff, engineering, fire department. And at that meeting, it was determined that the previous determination of the former fire marshal of having a 12-foot access easement was not good anymore and that we needed a wider easement. So the owner started working with the neighbor and threw a whole bunch of negotiations and agreements. And the neighbors were very kind, very open, very helpful. And they agreed to reduce the width of their easement from the original 13 feet that had been granted to them to six feet. So a seven-foot strip of that easement was given back to the property, and we ended up with a 19-foot access strip. The fire department said, "That is okay. You have a turnaround. You're still going to do an enhanced sprinkler system, and that suits for the accessibility to our vehicles." Therefore, we proceeded with that. Another comment that came about was the articulation and architecture of the, of the original design. So staff gave some input. The owners were very proactive, walking around the neighborhood, seeing the concerns that people had. And then we start massaging the building. We came up with a second design that was lower than this, but the neighborhood in the back said that that was more intrusive into their privacy, and they preferred to keep the building further the way that we have it on the initial design. So we did some more changes. And to make a long story short, finally, April of last year, we came in front of the Planning Commission. And then the Planning Commission raised several concerns, as Samantha clearly explained. And I want to reassure you that we tried to follow each one of your recommendations very seriously. We actually hired a new soils engineer that is a well-known and reputable firm in the area. So they conducted a report, and they found that the site was suitable for design. We took at heart the design of the drainage system. Before, we had a dissipation system that was taking portion of the runoff. We completely changed that concept. And then on top of the driveway, behind the retaining wall, we put a big swell that will collect all the water coming from the undeveloped area up from Calera Terrace. All that runoff will be taken directly to the storm drain system on Bayview. The driveway draining directly to Bayview. And all the roof areas, 100% of the roof in the upper deck is also draining to Bayview by gravity. The only portion of the site that drains towards the rear is the subdrains of the retaining walls, which now that we have stopped all this water coming from the top, is expected to be very little. And then we added a rain harvesting system that will be able to collect all that water. And in case those tanks filled up, we have a backup pump with a backup battery to pump the water up to a gravity system. So we feel that the way that the new drainage system is designed, it actually reduces the amount of runoff impacting the southern properties even less than the current conditions because we are stopping all that water that is flowing downhill. The other elements of concern, CEQA, Samantha clearly explained that not only the property is categorically exempt as a single-family home, but 82% of the perimeter of the property is adjacent to developed property. Only 17% of the property perimeter faces that rear undeveloped area. So it's definitely an infill lot. But nonetheless, infill, categorically exempt. Most importantly, there are no relevant issues that would impact the environment. Soil has been cleared. Drainage has been properly done. And all the other elements, staff has properly evaluated and determined that the building is doable. They will not create a detrimental impact to the area. And we are here to answer any question that you may have and to tell you that the owners just want to build their home, be another member of the Pacifica community. And we have designed this building taking into consideration the recommendations of the new and old soils engineer, of all the other engineers involved, and taking at heart the recommendations of the staff and the Planning Commission. So we feel we have a good project. We feel that 2026 is time to start building this house. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I'd like to confirm with the city attorney, but can we pause now to ask some questions of staff and potentially the applicant before going to full public comment? Okay. And one, one question before opening it to the rest is, we only have five Commissioners here tonight, but because there's no rezone, there's no general plan amendment, my impression is that we need a quorum of Commissioners voting, not a quorum of the total commission. Is that? That's correct. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Does anyone have questions of staff or of the applicant? No? I have one question for the applicant. And I appreciate that you brought the, the updated easement. It was not on the title report, so I appreciate seeing it now. I did not understand when we first reviewed this that the property owner was the grantor of the easement. And essentially, this is a quit claim?
Yes.
In return for other items of a certain width of that easement? Is that a fair?
Yeah, that is a fair assessment.
Okay, that's really helpful to understand. I really appreciate that you provided this. And then is Director Yip on the, on the phone as well? Okay. Director Yip, have you reviewed the geotechnical report that was provided by the applicant? Maybe we can bring him in as a presenter.
Good evening, planning Commissioners.
Hi.
Yes, I have, yes, I have reviewed the geotech report. And we will need some special inspections to follow the recommendations there. There's drill pairs, excavation, and grading, which we'll need a June technical report to confirm that those recommendations have been carried forth.
Okay, I think that would be a good idea. So maybe after public comment, we can talk about whatever your recommendations would be on that front. So if you don't mind, Director Yip, are you able to stay on until after public comment?
Yes, I'm able to stay on.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so with that, I'm going to, thank you. I'm going to open it to members of the public. Reminder that if you'd like to speak and you're in the audience, to please fill out a yellow card. If you're calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand now. And please raise your hand in Zoom. I'd like to take a moment to just kind of figure out how many people we have on Zoom. I'd like to take a moment to just kind of figure out how many people we have on Zoom.
There are four raised hands.
Okay, so we're going to start with the cards in the room, and then we're going to take the four raised hands before we close public comment. So I'm going to call the first three speakers. You will have three minutes to speak. Susan Miller, followed by Mamoru, sorry, I need my glasses, followed by Mamoru Takashi, and then Channing Hu. Susan?
Yep. First of all, thank you for all you do for us. So I live across the street and a little bit down the hill from the proposed site. The first thing I'd like to say is, as I understand it, all the neighbors should get 10 days' notice about the hearing, which we're at now, the December 1st date. I wasn't home to receive the letter, but the other neighbors received the letter on November 29th, and today's December 1st. So that didn't allow the 10 days that the neighbors should have to look over everything and, you know, formulate ours. So I would like to see this decision delayed so that we can have the 10 days that were due. It's interesting that the postmark was the 20th, which just barely, well, it doesn't give enough time. It doesn't give enough time at all if it was postmarked on the 20th. So the city didn't do their due diligence to get that letter to us. And I think that we should have this delayed so that we could have more time. So that's the first thing. I see that you did another geotechnical report. I question whether that was done, what's the word? Well, I'd like to see another one done. The photos of the current plan regarding the driveway on the easement look like a freeway on-ramp with a very large retaining wall, which will really change the neighbors' light at 125. So I would like to see that changed if the plan does go forward. I'd like to make sure that the Air Resources Board is aware of how many truckloads of dirt are going in and out. This will be a big impact on the air quality. To say nothing of the impact on the neighborhood, Bayview Road is a steep road. Originally, Calera Terrace was supposed to go in and the houses were supposed to come in from Calera Terrace. I realized that would be a big, big impact, especially on the neighbor on the uphill side of Bayview, but that was the way the neighborhood was initially designed. And these flag lots, I don't think are very good. And I was told years ago that we wouldn't allow those anymore, but Rockaway Beach Avenue has recently been paved to the appreciation of all the neighbors. As you can imagine, Rockaway Beach Avenue will be back to its horrible condition after the building of this house. And Bayview is in horrible condition. So I would like to see that the applicant repaves Rockaway Beach Avenue and Bayview Road after the completion of the construction. I also would like to see that the houses downhill, that written in the plan, is some compensation for any difficulty that the houses downhill from the house that's planned be compensated. We all know that things happen when houses are built. So I think there should be something written in there about that. There's a lot more to talk about, but I only had one day to think about this, so I'll let it go at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Memorial followed by Channing. And then after that will be Susan Wu. Is Mamoru Takashi here?
Hi.
Hello, my name is Channing Hu. I'm over at 111 Bayview. And I just don't have all my thoughts collected because there wasn't adequate time. Found out about this hearing only on Friday, had planned for the weekend, and here we are Monday. So I'm objecting to the fact that I didn't get the 10-day notice. And whatever we're going to decide, perhaps continue it to another hearing when we do have adequate 10 days' notice, because basically, this is lack of due process. So for now, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Susan Wu, so if Mamoru Takashi wants to speak, I'll come, oh, are you?
Good evening. My name is Mamoru Takashi. I live just below this property. And I'm against the proposal because I'm worried about mudslide or landslide when I clean up all the vegetation uphill. So the land won't absorb the water, rainwater, and then also when the pilot driving, it's going to be maybe a landslide. So I'm very serious concerned about this project. So I'm against this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Wu, followed by Carol Fragley, and then Augustin Barchuk.
Hi, thank you. I'm Susan Wu, and I live at 111 Bayview Road. I've been a resident there for 39 years. And first of all, I'd like to bring up the fact about the mailing of the notice. This is a posted meter, not postmarked by the post office, by your mailroom postal meter, Pitney Boyle's machine, stating that it was stamped by City Hall on the 20th. The second step that your mailroom has to do is bring these letters to the post office for mailing. So that is, we don't know that it was done. Just because it's stamped the 20th doesn't mean it reached the post office on the 20th. So again, that's another reason. We personally received this on the 28th. So it was, the 20th is Thursday. We received it on Friday, only to know about this meeting on Monday, okay? So again, the 10 days constructive notice was not met. So I think you guys need to talk to your mailroom to figure out why these were not in the post office on the 20th, because no way the post office takes eight days to mail it to Pacifica, okay? So that's how the mailroom works. And I'm sure City Hall works the same way, right? So this is a postage meter. This is not postmarked by the post office. It is a postage meter done by your mailroom, okay, in City Hall. So again, we weren't constructively given our 10 days' notice, okay? So that's the first thing. The second thing I'd like to bring up is every time it rains on Bayview Road, I don't know where the water is coming from, but when it rains, there is a waterfall, pool of water coming down about a foot wide, and it doesn't go over the sidewalk, but every large rain, this pool of water comes down Bayview Road. Bayview Road is a very, very, very steep hill, very steep. So I don't know where this water is coming from. And if you plan to put this big house, and they're concerned about it too, because they're talking about retaining walls and drainage and all this other stuff, because where they plan to put this house is right in the middle of the hill where all this water is coming from. So I think more concern needs to be done for all this water that's coming down. You can come down any rainy day and see pool, a waterfall of water coming down our street, okay? It doesn't affect anything because luckily, the sewer is great and the water is caught in the bottom, okay? The next thing I'd like to bring up, I'm talking really fast because I got three minutes, but the next thing I'd like to bring up is that Bayview Road is a very, very steep hill. In the 39 years that we have lived here, lived there, we have had five accidents happening, okay? And they were caused by visitors coming to Bayview Road.
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, thank you.
All right. Carol Fragley, followed by Augustin Barchuk, and then John Horvath.
Hello and good evening. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to voice our concerns, because I think our concerns are extremely legitimate. I did send a letter in advance, and I wanted to, I wasn't able to include all the photos. So I have a packet for the planning commission. If I can leave this with you when I'm finished, that'd be great.
Yes, when you're done, you can bring it to staff.
Yeah, thank you so much. So we who live below the area that's being considered for development need assurance that if this magnitude of work is to be done, our properties will be protected. As the attached photos show, and I can haul these up if you need to see these, things can get bad very quickly. Just the plant removal and soil loosening in the clear-cut area behind my house, created as a path for workers, resulted in runoff powerful enough to erode the ground beneath my fence and move my three small retaining walls. Well in advance of any extended work, some plan needs to be put in place to prevent further damage and to establish procedures to deal with potential problems, of which I believe there will be many. My neighbors on both sides and I will need assurance of that, and we would like to see the visuals showing where planned retaining walls, drainage, and excavation will impact us. We would also like to see renderings, photographic representation, or models of where the house, ADU, and garage will be located in relationship to our properties. So far, the renderings and architectural drawings do not clearly represent location or scale. And the proposed property placement does not seem to match up with the plans. Have there been changes and adjustments? How will they impact those of us below and adjacent to our property? Who will provide contractual legal assurance that any damage to our property will be paid for? Builder, owners, city? If problems arise, how will there be resolved? What recourse do neighboring property owners have in the event of destruction or damage? The city must postpone any further action until these questions are answered and our concerns are addressed with verification in writing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, Augustin Barchuk, followed by John Horvath, and that's the last speaker card
Hello, my name is Augustine Barchuk. I live at 125 Bayview Road. I'm here to point out some, just a few of the specific areas from the staff report that do not address the issues that were brought up at the last meeting and do not warrant this project moving forward unless addressed. As you are aware, the planning commission had directed staff to obtain several additional documents. The easement documents are missing from this packet. As agreed to at the last meeting, without these details, I don't see how staff can make an informed decision about this project. Staff report, page 10, states that there is a lack of any feasible access route to the access to the property. This is inaccurate, as pointed out in prior communications, and has not been addressed in the staff report. A simple review of the city map shows a clear paper street above the property line, which would provide both safer access and minimize earth disruption. Why has this not been addressed and why was it left out again in this staff report? This same page states, and I quote, "that the proposed driveway is designed with approximately 12 feet of separation from the neighboring driveway to the north," end of quote. The report fails to mention the separation to the neighboring driveway to the south, which is my house, which by the way, looks like it's zero feet, none. This has been also brought up in prior comments and again ignored. Page 67 of the packet, section 3A, 3A of the draft resolution is inaccurate, simply not true. As you can clearly see in the photos provided by staff, the proposed site plan does not allow for quote-unquote relatively, relatively deep setback from all property lines. It sits within inches of my property. On the same page, it is acknowledged that the steeply sloping topography of the project site presents significant challenges for minimizing excavation. In conclusion, why build there? Thank you.
Thank you. John Horvath.
I think our good neighbor on Rockaway Beach just below us is trying to make it in time. His name is Patrick, but I guess we'll see if he makes it. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes. Okay, great. So first, I just want to bring up a comment in the earlier part of the presentation about why the access couldn't be done from Calera Terrace and that it was too steep and too much grading. And that's the paper road planned by the city. So are you trying to say that the city planned a road that was too steep that couldn't be done because too much grading was required? This is what I don't understand, because that's what causes all the problems with this giant T-shaped turnaround, fire truck turnaround, that takes up, you know, that combined with the roof is 10,000 feet to 26,000 feet. And that's why you have all these setbacks that are so short on a massive 26,000 square foot lot. So I don't know why there's not more detail around why that can't be done, because I don't think, it's always been kind of dismissed with the two sentences, right? The second thing is, I think when people saw the photo of the highway on-ramp beside Augustine and Vera's house, they were just appalled. And my take was, this can't be legal, because it's right beside, it's beside the driveway and basically turns the side of their house into an alleyway. So like, I would really like to have some lawyers look at that. Thank you for providing the easement documentation. And is there any other easement documentation missing between, like, we had got three copies of the 74, we just got the 23. Is there anything else that's missing, is my other question, because I would like to dive into that a little bit more. And then finally, the story polls. I don't know why they're so difficult to do. The reason given that I read in the minutes was that we can't clear five, six feet of vegetation, but we're going to, we're going to clear the whole hillside and remove, I thought it was two protected pines, not one, as stated earlier. But that's okay. So I just don't understand why I can't have story polls so I can see how my light is affected and my privacy is really affected. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll move to the four raised hands on the phone. Please state your name for the record.
Zoom participant, participant Vae, you may unmute yourself.
Are you referring to Vera?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the comments that so many of the others have made, so I will not repeat those. I do want to express my concern about the lack of proper follow-up. I understand, and I'm calling in virtually, obviously, but that there's some other documents that have been turned in this evening that we haven't had an opportunity to see, so would like to be able to comment on that upon being able to see them. I think this issue of the easement is a key factor in the viability of the project moving forward. If you look at the attachment G of the preliminary title report, it clearly states that the easement is only intended for the planting of trees, and there's nothing else in the documentation. So as you've also seen in reference to the driveway access, the drainage, and all of the other information that has been shared, including the part about CEQA, it's general and it doesn't really, it actually flies in the face of some of the other commentary that I know you all have received in writing, in the public comments of the issues, the photographs of how much this earth has been shifting and moving. I know there- I know there are some neighbors that are needing to reinforce their properties because of the earth movement, and it is just really disconcerting to think that there will be no sequoia done in an area that clearly has demonstrated through landslides in the area, earth movement, earthquakes, droppages of sections of houses, that this is clearly something that should be very, very closely paid attention to. And from what I've seen of the documentation that I spent the last 72 hours reading, it is not satisfactory and does need to be further looked at. I really appreciate that all of you dedicate your time to the efforts of making sure that building is done responsibly, and I appreciate your attention to the detailed comments that all of us have offered to you this evening and in writing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next caller, please.
Greg Jones, you may unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Greg Jones, and on behalf of myself and my wife, Melina Cuddy Jones, we live at 154 Bayview Road, which is directly across the street from, from the easement. So, so a few things. First, I'd like to echo my neighbors' concerns about receiving written notice. For me, I received it last night only. I left for Thanksgiving weekend to visit grandparents, checked my mailbox on Wednesday, the 25th, nothing was in there. Came home late last night, and only because my neighbors were texting that I knew that this is even happening. So I don't appreciate that whatsoever and have certainly have not time to collect all my thoughts as I did back on April 1st, 2024. Given that my driveway is directly across the street from this easement, I'll repeat, the picture of the driveway, slope driveway is pretty appalling and will be an eyesore. And even from the rendering, it looks like there's a tree on the north side that's there that I don't think would, would have, would have enough space to, have to be removed on the neighbor's property on the upside. But the, the two real main concerns I have for my, my house, my property, my family, is that during construction, I don't know how many trucks, especially with all the grading, are going to be expected to go up and down that easement. There's not much space to turn there, it's a narrow street, as everybody has already said, it's a very steep street, and I absolutely refuse to have any of these construction trucks use my driveway for three-point turns to reverse in and out or to get out of there. I absolutely refuse that. My driveway is already disrepair because the, not this, members of this council, but the city has declined a tree cutting permit for a tree that's in my driveway that's destroying, the roots are destroying my driveway. I'm already going to be in the tank for tens of thousands of dollars to get that repaired someday. And so I don't need these huge trucks full of dirt, hundreds and hundreds of them, and all the construction materials destroying another part of my driveway. Okay, that's not fair. Also, I have kids. I don't want trucks being anywhere near, you know, putting my kids in danger if they're riding their bikes on the semi-flat part of the driveway or walking up and down the street. Second thing related to the on-ramp, let's call it, it has to do with the water drainage. And you're telling me 95% of the water is coming down that driveway? Based on the renderings of the drawings, I don't see how it would not also spill over to my neighbors at 125 Bayview on the downside. And, and I would just ask, has the builder, or the tenants, or any of the commission ever been on Bayview Road when there's even like an inch of water worth of rain in a day or even in an hour, which is not that, it's, it's a lot, but it's not a lot? And, and you can just imagine how much volume of water will be heading down that hill at that speed. And, and as neighbors have already said, as it is, the gutters are such a waterfall or river that head down, every time it rains, it washes, it can wash, easily wash our trashcans down the street or, you know, things like that. So there's tons of water coming down there, and I'm not convinced that the drains, especially on my side of the street where there's a lot of vegetation growing in the drains, are sufficient to capture all that water, especially when you add the square footage times volume of water coming down that driveway directly at my house. Okay?
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
I think we're at three minutes. Thanks, Greg.
Thanks.
Okay. Next caller, please.
Dana C., you may unmute yourself.
Dana, are you able to unmute yourself? Can you hear us? I think we can go on to the next caller and then come back to Dana.
Participant with the last four digits, 9257, you may unmute yourself.
Can you press star, press star nine to, or I'm sorry, press star six to unmute yourself? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's the participant with the phone number 650-826-9257. Please unmute yourself if you would like to talk.
Okay, let's go back to Dana, and if that's not working, then those raised, then we'll go to what the public comment email list, and let those folks send their comments via email, and we'll come back. We got one more speaker card that I'm going to allow into the public record.
Once again, Dana C., you may unmute yourself.
Hi, I apologize, I was having technical difficulties. Thank you, good evening, commission. I live across the street from the proposed site, and I just wanted to request to postpone this agenda item due to the late notice, as many of our neighbors have mentioned. We received it actually on Saturday over a holiday weekend, and I didn't have enough time to review the resolutions and updated information since the last hearing in April of 2024. I just wanted to say that I'm not against building the home. The property owners seem like very kind people. I'm just asking the planning commission to ensure that this is reviewed thoughtfully and executed with safety as a priority and take accountability for the risks, not just during construction, but over time as the home and the landscape settle in. As many have mentioned, the water runoff is, is pretty significant in our neighborhood, and I want to make sure that that's been adequately addressed. Like even with the recent rain, there was a river of rain, of water flowing down our hill. I emailed a video of rainwater to the commission last April. So with all of that runoff from the hillside above the proposed site, less than 95% of runoff from the property, this will all go onto Bayview Road. And I don't believe that this has been thoroughly assessed to determine the impact to the neighboring properties and our waterway. And I like to recall that there were two mudslides in the Rockaway neighborhood in the past few years, one of which almost blocked entire access to our neighborhood. Also, I'm curious why an original access would be planned between two homes instead of going to Calera Terrace, which is currently shown as a paper street? So this appears to be an afterthought in which the impacted property owners don't approve of. Unless you understand that the North County requires, the North County Fire required a large driveway for safety, which is important, but the unfortunate size and the steep slope of this access driveway gives the appearance of a freeway on-ramp, which we would be looking directly at as well. And we do empathize with the adjacent homeowners who will now have a large wall and driveway budding up against their home instead of the green space that wildlife has often spotted. So we do urge the builders to please reconsider the design to reduce the driveway footprint and improve the setback from the adjacent home. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's give the phone caller one more try to press star six and unmute themselves.
Participant with the phone number, the last four digits, 9257, you may unmute yourself.
Okay. I would just ask that staff please provide the public comment email so that if that caller is having technical difficulty or chooses to provide a comment at a later time, that they have the way to do that.
Thank you, Chair Hauser. The email address is publiccomment@pacifica.gov.
Thank you, Director. So I'm going to go to this last yellow card that I have, and then we're going to close public comment. This is Patrick Smith.
Hi, my name is Patrick Smythe, and my wife and I are the owners of 731 Rockaway Beach Ave, which is right below the proposed Calera Terrace project. We purchased our home on October 1st of this year, and we just learned of this on Friday when we received the notice. We're just trying to get our, you know, up to speed at very short notice for what happens to be like a very major construction project right above us. To that end, our main concern is the render included in the packet. The location and the elevation of the house look dramatically different from the site plans themselves. Can we please get an updated render of the proposed construction that matches the plans or physical markers at least, so we can get a frame of reference? Additionally, as we are directly below the site, is an independent geotechnical review possible? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, so I think that's it for speakers. I'm going to bring it back to Mr. Chavaria. If you have anything you'd like to say, you have three minutes. And then I believe the commissioners will have questions for you at some point.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. Yes, indeed, I'd like to make a couple of points in here. Number one, everybody expressed concerns of geotechnical and drainage. Number one, the geotechnical has been done by two separate firms with the same conclusion. It has been reviewed by the city and its engineers. So three different, I mean, two different independent soils engineers and the city staff reviewing that, I think it should be sufficient evidence that the soils report is good, that it's consistent, and that there is no evidence of landslides in the area. Regarding the drainage, we all know that the current regulations require that the drainage out of a property before development, I'm sorry, after development should be equal or less than after development. And that's why we have those C3, C6 forms, and that's why we designed those biodetentions and those bioswells. So this property complies with the drainage regulations to have the post-development drainage being less than what it is pre-development. We have, if you look on the drawings in there, bioswell at the base of the driveway. We have three other bioswells and biodetention systems in the property. So I feel confident, and not just by my own design, but by two other civil engineers that have been involved in the project, that the design is consistent with the current regulations, and it will not be detrimental to the area. Then regarding the driveway, we wish we didn't have that turnaround, we wish we didn't have the driveway. We have the topography of the land and the regulations of the fire department to follow. Our hands are basically tied on that to put the driveway the way that it is. But most importantly, what would happen if at the end of Bayview Road, there is a big fire? The fire department cannot access that area, cannot turn around. We've had experiences before in Rockaway with fires. This fire truck turnaround provides an additional icon of safety for that area, because the fire department will have a place where the trucks will come in and be able to turn around. So yes, it's hard to have a large project coming into your area, but let's look at the technical reports, let's look and let's pay attention to what the professionals have done. And hopefully, you reach the conclusion that we have addressed all those elements. And lastly, the story polls were not placed because it would have been a year with the site completely graded, going through winter without proper drainage and erosion controls, then we will have a serious problem. And that is the reason those story polls were not created. So, thank you. Any questions you have, I'm always available.
I think we will, but I'm going to bring it back to the commission first, so I'm going to officially close public comment.
If I may, can I, can staff have a moment too?
Yes, and then I'm going to re-ask the questions that the community members asked, and I think the one you're interested in, Director, is the same one that I'm going to ask for, which is the 10-day notice concern that was brought up.
Thank you, Chair Hauser. I did want to just confirm that the notices were posted on November 20th and taken to the post office that day. We actually had three large mailings that day, and this went out with those.
Okay, so that has been confirmed?
Yes.
Okay, and I, I know this, but I want to make sure that I ask it for the record. The staff report with the documentation, was that available on Friday as it typically is?
The staff report was posted on Wednesday.
Was posted last Wednesday?
Wednesday because of the holiday.
Okay, okay, so earlier than it typically.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Can I get a little further clarification on that?
Please do.
So, one of the other things I heard about the notification, even if it was mailed on the 20th, would it have been 10 days? There was no allowance for mail, for the time for it to be in the mail. I'm not saying it wasn't taken to the post office, maybe it was, but there was no margin for error there, so they didn't get 10 days' notice. But I also heard them mentioning they didn't get complete documentation because of this document, which is a pretty critical one. Many people have mentioned it. It was not in the packet, and in fact, was just handed to us at the beginning of the meeting. So could you address that, please?
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. The Pacifico Municipal Code requires that projects get noticed for public hearing 10 days prior to hearing within the San Mateo Daily Journal, which we did, and that notices mailed within 10 days of the public hearing, which we also did. So staff has satisfied all of the requirements for the public hearing noticing. In terms of the additional easement, that shows the changes that were made to, as Javier was saying, to reduce the width of the planting area. And so we can make this available online as well, but this is the legally binding document that shows that the property owner has the right to use this land and that they've adequately addressed the issues with the width.
The, I would, I would ask, I'm sorry, there's, I know it's frustrating, but there's a, a pattern of decorum that has to happen at these meetings. We wish that we could answer your questions as you're asking them, but we have to re-ask them this way, and now that public comment is closed, we have to, the, the conversation is now going to happen outside of the members of the community. This is the same in every city. I would love to have it be different, but this is the, the way it is. So we're going to have the conversation with the proper decorum. So Commissioner Davis did that answer your question?
Yes, it did.
Thank you. I would like to continue re-asking questions that I heard from the public, and if I miss any, I'd like other commissioners to weigh in, and then we'll bring it back to the commission for questions. So, Director, yep, one of the questions I heard was that, was whether or not the air quality management district needed to be made aware of grading. It's my understanding that BACMED regulates contaminants in the air and not grading, but maybe you could weigh in on that, just so that we can make sure we're doing this the right way?
So they, they will need to comply with the air district and any permitting requirements for the amount of grading that they're doing here. As far as the city's concerned, I mean, we're going to require that inspections are done, they have adequate water trucks that are watering down the site, and if there's off-haul that's needed to be covered for the dump trucks, we will require that as well.
Is that covered under a particular condition of approval? And if not, we should add it?
I will double-check the conditions of approval and add it as needed here.
Please, that would be, that would be wonderful. So let me make a note of that. Another question was asked about the condition of the road, which was just repaved. I didn't see any conditions of approval, Director, yep, on the requirements for doing any sort of video survey so that damage caused by the project could be repaired? Is that something that you considered, and is that a condition of approval that we could add? If so, we could specify it solely for... If so, we could specify it solely for damage caused by the project and not general damage, which wouldn't be fair.
So we, we had a pre-construction video condition that similar, that we had done similarly on the Olympian Way. We can, we can add that here. The, the amount of trucking for this amount of work, it doesn't seem to be significant, but we can definitely add that in and so we can verify all the damages that would be done by the construction.
Yeah, it could be, we could make it more flexible so that it could be a photo survey because I agree that it's a single-family home. Okay. I have a couple that are for the applicant that I'll maybe save. Director, yep, there were questions about stormwater. And I think it would be really helpful, from a legal standpoint, to discuss something that Mr. Chavaria discussed, which is about how much stormwater is allowed to discharge from the site compared to what's currently discharging from the site. If you could talk about the legality of it, and then if we could talk about whether the water is sheet-flowing or connecting into a catch basin, what the actual pattern is, that would be helpful, and we can call Javier up if we need to.
So, under drainage law, the site is allowed to drain all of the existing drainage that it's currently doing, and however it drains onto Bayview. It's, it's allowed to continue with that drainage. And if the, the development increases the drainage and there's, so that, how they separate it out is pervious versus impervious runoff. Pervious is the soils, and if you increase it by adding impervious areas like, like concrete or like the buildings, then you, you increase the stormwater runoff. You, you have to detain it on-site for, for a duration. And we have requested for it to be done for a 100-year storm.
Okay. And that's, that's a bigger storm than typical, which is the 10-year storm that's usually studied. Am I correct in?
That is correct. That is a storm that would happen once every 100 years.
Okay.
Director, yep, sorry if I might jump in. The requirement to retain on-site, that's only for water that falls from the sky onto the site, am I correct, and not from water that is coming down the hill due to some existing natural drainage of the hillside?
For all, on all runoff?
Yeah, that, well, the 100-year, that's correct. It is for rainwater runoff. If there's runoff that's coming from the groundwater, that would be considered an existing condition which the site can continue to do.
So, i-if I may try to simplify this, because we are not all civil engineers and there are members of the public here who are specifically concerned about this. I think what I am hearing, and I'd like confirmation that I'm understanding it correctly, is that stormwater currently flows through the site right now. Once the project is complete, the same amount or less stormwater is all that's legally allowed to come off the site. The site is not legally allowed to increase the amount of stormwater coming off the site. Is that correct?
That is cor-correct to an extent. I, I want to avoid getting into some of the engineering terms on what they're required to, to detain on the site and the rate. But yes, we, we are requiring them for a 100-year storm to, to det, to, to, or to have a detention or hold the water in their system, and then it will release back out when the storm passes. But yes, it does, it's not supposed to increase the runoff during those heavy storms.
And are they legally allowed to concentrate water?
They, they are not. So they must continue the drainage patterns that is currently on the site right now. And it must continue to discharge in the same locations as well.
Does the water currently flow into, when it connects into the public storm drain system, is it flowing into a V-ditch or a gutter, or is it going into a catch basin?
I may need the applicant to assist with this question.
Well, okay, we'll, we'll get to, we'll get to the applicant in a minute. And I think, I think Commissioner Godwin has more on this, but I want to make, I want to ask one more question. Did Public Works review and engineering, did they review this application and does this meet with all of the stormwater C3, C6 hydromodification requirements currently as designed?
So that, that is a standard comment that we will have on all of the projects, that they cannot increase the stormwater runoff from the existing conditions, and all additional runoff that is created must be detained on the site. As far as the C3 that's done by a third party, anything over, it used to be 10,000 square feet, but anything that disturbs 5,000 square feet is, it has to comply with C3 requirements and the treatment, which the applicant has done with all the bio-retention areas.
And that review has been done as part of these entitlements and will be done again during the construction document phase of the project?
That is correct. So the, the plans are schematic when they go through the planning entitlements. When they get an even more thorough review will be during, during the building permit process.
Okay, and that will be independently reviewed by the city's third-party reviewer?
Yes, as well as city staff. It will all be reviewed once again as they go from the conceptual to a final design.
I think that will make the community feel a lot better. Commissioner Godwin, you seem to have a hand raised. Did I get that right?
Yeah, I had one related question for you. One of the borings detected an alluvial water channel somewhere under, I think about 10 feet down. Does the contractor or the applicant in this case have any responsibility to measure that underground water flow to mitigate it or to ensure that it's no greater than it, it is today before the project begins?
Though I think this could particularly impact the drill piers, and it's going to come up with the special inspections as required from a third-party geotechnical engineer on the project. When, when they do these drill piers, they're not going to be able to pour the concrete if, if there's some standing water in there and that, that's going to be inspected. That, that's probably going to be the most impact that's going to have on the project.
So you're saying as long as when the piers and the spread foundation are put in, it's dry, their, their obligation has been, the contractor's obligation has been met? Is that correct?
Yes, I, I, I would believe so. I would have to defer to the geotech engineer to, to comment further on that.
Mr. Chavaria, is your geotechnical engineer on Zoom by any chance? Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Chair, if I may just follow up on that. I believe it's in the GEO report that any of the drilled, they advise, any of the drilled piers, the bores, if they do accumulate water, groundwater, whatever, it must be pumped out prior to any mortar, concrete, steel going into those.
Yes, and I believe I saw in the, and I, I like to bolster some of the geotechnical conditions of approval because I think the geotech, first of all, I want to thank the applicant for doing a full new geotechnical report. I know that's not inexpensive, and that's the thing that I was missing at the last meeting. And I, I, I appreciate that it wasn't just Performa, it wasn't just someone reviewing the geotechnical report, but it was new borings. And I think that was very helpful. And I appreciate the applicant doing that. I did see, and I think it's, I think it's on packet page 125. To just piggyback on what Commissioner Redfield said, it's packet page 126. It says that observation or representative from the geotechnical firm has to be done during grading. And I heard Director Yip talking about special inspections of all of the piers, soil-moving activities, retaining walls. So I think, I think the current condition of approval kind of covers it, but I want to get more detailed as we, as we go through this because I think it was Ms. Fredley who has said that, that we needed assurances, and I think it's, I think the conditions of approval are the right place for those assurances. So I think we can get those assurances.
Chair Houser?
Please.
Staff will have some conditions of approval for, to modify that condition.
Wonderful.
Available when you're, when, when the commission is ready.
Okay, I appreciate that. The other questions that I wrote down are all for Mr. Chavaria. Did anyone else have questions for staff that came from the community?
I just wanted to reiterate your concerns about conditions of approval that would provide some of the reassurances they're looking for and would even take it a step, one, a step and a page back where, and in fact, throughout the geotechnical report, which I also appreciated you doing, and it was very thorough, I think a lot of the questions that were asked were addressed in it. But throughout the report, they talk about recommending observation, consultation, and changes to calculations and as circumstances and conditions dictate, and that there should be a geo-representative from their firm there observing grading and the, the piling borings, et cetera. So I'm with you absolutely on that.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, I had one last question. There was reference to story poles that were committed to in about April of 2024. Could somebody explain why those were never installed? Or they were waived or something?
I think Mr. Chavaria addressed it well when he gave his rebuttal that it would have taken, but I want, I want Director Yip to weigh in. I don't know if you heard that, Director Yip, but what the applicant said was to, to clear and grub without winterization for story poles would have created an unsafe situation. And I'd love for you to weigh in on that, if you please.
I apologize. Could you give me a little bit more context on what, what we're referring to?
I think someone had asked the applicant to install story poles. I don't remember the applicant agreeing to do it. Did the applicant, I'm, I'm looking at Mr. Chavaria, he's shaking his head. I don't think, I don't think the applicant agreed to install story poles. I think it was requested by the community.
I can also speak to that.
Yeah, please.
If I may, Chair Houser, I believe because this is in the hillside, vegetation clearing may have required a site development permit as well.
Got it. Okay. Do you have any other questions on that, Commissioner Godwin?
Nope.
Okay. Mr. Chavaria? So, I think if we go back to stormwater, my read of the staff report was that you're improving the current situation, which was not amply clear when we first reviewed this. So if you could speak to the question I asked Director Yip, as well as where the stormwater goes when it gets to the public system, I think that would be helpful. And I think if you could also talk about whether you're detaining or retaining on-site, that would also be helpful.
Absolutely. The, let me start from the top, and that's actually the way that the site is going to be built. When the driveway is cut, a retaining wall will be installed. That retaining wall is going to have a sub-drain system, but on top is going to have a swell that any surface water that will come through that behind from the northern portions of the site will be collected by that system. And at the base of the driveway, there is a biodetention pond. So that pond is calculated to, eh, to, to, to house, or the capacity, the volume of that pond is enough to help the runoff produce by a 100-year storm of that upper section. So what happens when the water gets there? So some of that may infiltrate because it has infiltration at the bottom, some other will overflow at a rate that is equal or less than the original amount of water. So we will calculate the sheet flow that comes down that strip of land and say it's going to be four cubic foot per second. So when the pond is discharging that water, it will be discharging it at the same rate. So that handles that upper portion in the driveway. Then the building is constructed, all the water from the roof is going to go to another detention pond. So we have, I shouldn't call it a detention pond, it's called a biodetention. And what it is by a biodetention are these ponds with vegetations and especially filtering soils that allows water to easily trickle in. Then it has some storage capacity, and again, once it reaches the overflow point, it starts being trickled out at the same rate that it should have been done before development. So we have the upper section, the roofs to an, to two different sections, and then the border portions of the deck are going to these rainwater harvesting pipes that have a capacity of over 1,000 cubic feet.
In your professional opinion, because we're missing Vice Chair Berman, who is our resident civil engineer, in your professional opinion, will that better the conditions that are currently at the site? Will it stay the same? Will it be worse?
I believe that it will be improved. Because one of the advantages of a properly designed and built site is that you divert the runoff the way that you want to divert it. You want, you want to collect it properly and dispose of it properly. Right now, like one of the neighbors was saying, water is flowing as it pleases and it may create erosion that is unwanted for the property owner and for the neighbors.
I do appreciate also that, Director Yip, you had a stormwater operations and maintenance plan that I think will be required in perpetuity. Is that correct, Director Yip? This is COA 29?
That is correct. They're, they're going to have to maintain that storage system that applicant is referring to here and just making sure that it's, doesn't get clogged up and just causes overflow on, and so yes, they do need to properly maintain this system.
Does that require annual inspections?
So, I, I have to, I, I don't believe a system like this would require, to be looked at annually, but yeah, we can definitely have some periodic inspections on this.
I think we should. Any other questions on that? And then, and sorry, and then please do say how this connects into the public storm drain system, but go ahead, Commissioner Redfield.
If I may, thank you, Chair. I was curious, you talked about the swale on the driveway. My assumption, my understanding is that would be on the left side of the driveway as you would go up the driveway. Is that, is that correct? On the other side of the retaining wall?
Yes, it will be behind the retaining wall on the upper side.
And what are the origins of the water going to the swale at the top? Is that runoff from the?
Runoff from the undeveloped area.
Undeveloped hill, that's, that's exactly what I thought. And you did state there is a bioswale collecting that water through, at the bottom of the swale at the beginning of the driveway, correct?
Correct.
Good, that'll, yep, that'll do it. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
So I did hear some concerns, particularly from the people down below, about if there is something that happens or damages, then, you know, who's liable for that? And it seems to me I saw that in the COA. Yeah? And I, I don't know, maybe Director Yip could?
Yeah, and I did want to, I, I, that's a great question, Commissioner Davis, because I did think that even though this is only one single-family home, I think it is worth a simple, you know, tract improvement agreement, Director Yip, that just creates obligations between the city and the applicant. Something very simple, not a huge document. Is that something the city can do? Developer tract agreement?
Can I ask if this, if the city attorney could, could weigh in on this as well?
I'm, I'm not sure what you're exactly asking in the tract.
Sure. So, so typically when we have larger projects, and I say larger meaning more homes, this is over half an acre, right? So I, it, it kind of borders two different things. We would have something called a subdivision improvement agreement that would have bonds and requirements for construction. And for example, if the developer went out of, you know, they ran out of money, they wouldn't leave a half-winterized site. They would be, there would be a security, a bond, that the city could safe off the site. That's a very standard. The site. That's a very standard sub, it's a very standard agreement.
For a subdivision map?
It is a very standard agreement for a land improvement of this size.
Anything that we require would be subject to the constitutional nexus requirements. So we can require an agreement, but it has to meet the proportionality and the nexus.
Right, exactly. Okay.
So if there's anything above and beyond what will require any similar project, that may be problematic until the applicant agrees to it.
I think for the safety of, I mean, the reason this got continued at the last meeting is because all of the folks that live below this site have displacement of their yards and stairs. Now that, who knows why that is? Compaction, different reasons. But there needs to be a safety, there needs to be safety here.
Again, but it has to be tied to the impacts from this particular project. So if something is preexisting.
Right.
Condition which this project does not access, increasing or impacting, requiring them to improve that in an agreement, they'll have to either voluntary agree with it, or we need some kind of?
I think, I think we're saying the same thing. There needs to be a nexus sized agreement that's appropriate for the project.
Yeah, we can require an agreement, we'll just have to negotiate the language with the applicant.
And that's what I-
Chair, sorry.
I would like to say the conditions of approval already cover a lot of those things, and they are recorded against the title of the property. So it might be just, even if we require an agreement to be there, it might just be repeating what the conditions of approval already require under the code.
Chair, if I may, I'm going to revise the stormwater condition here a little bit to request for the hydraulic calculations along with a letter from their engineer of record to indicate the proposed storm drain system does not increase the runoff above the predevelopment conditions. So, so now the, the engineer on record, and that's, their licenses will be online here to verify that their design does not increase runoff into the area.
I, I think that's a great condition, and I see Mr. Chavaria. I mean, I, I know you've already done this, but I think there's a lot of people who are concerned. I think just documenting it makes everyone feel better.
Completely in agreement.
Yeah, perfect. Can you answer the question on how the stormwater connects to the public system in Bayview?
Yes, it, excuse me. It has two connections. One connection, as I, as I was explaining, the bio swell has a drain in the bottom where water, some of the water percolates, some of that water goes through that drain. It has an overflow, and it has sheet flow. So the sheet flow basically continues going on the surface. The percolation continues going as it currently is. And then that additional perforated pipe at the bottom of the swell is connected into the main storm drain system. And that is kind of a, like a backup prevention to prevent if excessive water is coming, so it doesn't overwhelm the street.
So that there's not additional sheet flow? It connects into a pipe in the street?
Yes.
That no one will know that stormwater is going into there?
That is correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I was hoping you'd say. I, thank you. Commissioner Redfield?
Just had a, had a quick one on the driveway. Now, the upper part of the driveway, the turnaround, if you will, if I remember from the drawings, I believe that's a 2% slope on that, and then that drains to the, to the structure itself, to a drainage system at the highest level.
Yes.
So that goes to retention and/or bio swells?
Correct.
The driveway itself, what is the, its impermeable surface, obviously? So are the calculations been done for the actual length of the driveway?
Absolutely.
And runoff for that?
That's part of the hardscape. And because of the driveway itself is that the project went over the threshold and has to comply with hydro modifications. So all the water coming from that hardscape is actually contained by a bio detention system at the base of the driveway.
At the base of the driveway?
Correct.
Excellent, thank you.
Commissioner Davis, did you have another question? We're on the driveway. Do you want to ask a driveway question?
Oh, I want to ask about the driveway, but I'm not sure that it's, well, it is addressing, okay, so it is addressing public comment. I think a lot of people have a problem with the driveway. And I also, the other side of that, that issue was why not Calera Terrace? And I know we've heard too steep, which is not at all quantifiable for me. I mean, look at Livingston, look at Grand Avenue. And I, in looking at the plans, agree that it looks like that's where the access was originally intended. But definitely, those are two questions. The elephant on the block, so to speak, is why the driveway, why can't the driveway be different? Literally, if I was in 125, I would feel like I was living under a freeway on ramp. And then the other side of that, why not Calera Terrace?
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. To speak to Calera Terrace, that street was created as part of the original subdivision in 1908. We had very different standards, in some cases, no standards. So it was not created under current thinking about, you know, how to lay out a subdivision, you know, how one might access.
I'm thinking I might be able to provide some insight here. I actually looked at a empty lot on Calera Terrace years ago and decided not to because of the feasibility. And I work for a company that grades things for a living. I'm hoping, Director Dr. Graves, that you could speak to, it wouldn't be, it would be on the applicant to develop whatever of Calera Terrace they would need to develop to access, and it would be all at their cost to develop this road, and it would also have to meet the current specifications for roadway, as if you're building any other street in Pacifica, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so drainage, storm drains, you know, grading, access, as if you're building a, a street anywhere else, right? Okay, I just wanted that to be clear to the public. Then I have a, I guess, a follow-up question to expand on, and this is something I'm, I'm not really clear on, and I was looking at it. I'm very familiar with the setback rules for buildings and certain other things, but I couldn't find anywhere, and I'm maybe missing it, retaining walls, and specifically roadway grading, does that have a setback requirement from lot lines or buildings?
It does not.
Does not. So you could, you can build a retaining wall and a roadway of some reasonable size directly up to a lot line?
A driveway and retaining wall, yes, that's correct. I totally understand, and I had asked at the last meeting if we could look at the Calera Terrace, and I appreciate that you looked at it, and I understand why we're not, to Commissioner Ferguson's point. I really appreciate that you guys took the time to get the easement sorted. And again, the, I want to be really clear, because the way this was talked about made it seem like the access to the property is through an easement, but the access to the property is through the property.
Yes.
And that's a really important nuance. I think the thing that I am having a problem with, and I know that you have a problem with it because you said it as well, is that that driveway is hideous. And I totally understand that the fire, like Appendix D requires the 150 hammerhead and requires the 20 feet, and you have 18 feet variance. I have a question that is probably for staff and may not be answered by this group, but maybe we could add just like a, I think we're all rowing in the same direction here. Would the fire department be satisfied with a 16-foot accessway with a two-foot planting strip, which I've had, I've seen other fire departments do? Or could, could there be like a turf, like, is there a way to make that driveway look better from one planter to another, right? Like, it's really ugly.
No, I, I appreciate that, Chair Hauser, thank you. I cannot speak for the fire department. I know that the, the applicant and North County Fire have spent a lot of time on the particular, like, on the particulars and the specifics of the project. And so I, I guess, which is just to say, I know it's been thoroughly vetted by fire, and I definitely don't have the, the expertise to override. Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. And I don't think we, no one here can override.
Yeah.
Fire, and they're not part of the city. I wonder if the applicant would be willing to explore, not as a requirement, but just out of the kindness and?
Yeah, actually, actually, we did. In one of the, as I said, we've been seven years on this project, right?
Yeah.
And in one of the runarounds, and we did it with the intention of trying to avoid hydro modification.
Yeah.
So we put the whole center strip of the driveway.
As grass.
As a grass and a planted area. And the fire department wasn't very happy about it. They said that the way that they access the road, portion of that center is always used. They have specific designs for weight of the truck. We, we actually proposed-
Seventy thousand pounds?
That's right.
Yeah.
So we actually proposed to use the open face blocks with the grass in the middle.
Grasscrete?
Yeah. So they said, oh, yeah, sure, we agreed to that, but you have to give us a UL listing that is able, that the, that the system that you're proposing is able to take that loading. There is no such a thing. We actually did a little research on that, and it will take probably years and thousands of dollars to get some certification to that point, so.
So let me, let me ask a question. If the city and the North Coast County Fire District work to help facilitate, and again, not as a condition, but just as recommendation, because your client, I'm sure, wants a much nicer driveway. Your neighbors want a much nicer driveway.
Absolutely.
It looks terrible. So if we, if the fire department was willing to accept turf block?
A turf block would be fine, yes. If, if they would accept it.
Commissioner Ferguson, who's like very well versed in this?
And you're just surprised to hear that there doesn't exist a product, but I've never tried to do that.
I, I have built a lot of turf block.
Yeah.
Aerial apparatus roads.
There, there is two elements in here. Turf blocks are allowed in flat areas.
Uh huh.
But when you have a slope of 10% or greater, that's when the problem starts. In, in some areas in there, we have to put grooves so that the fire truck can access that area.
I'm going to go to Commissioner Davis, and I'm going to say there's no way that we need to solve this now.
Okay.
I am going to recommend to the planning department that the city and the fire department work together to find a more aesthetically pleasing solution.
And we're a hundred-
We won't hold you to it.
A hundred percent for it.
Can't.
If a middle strip of landscaping, if a more decorative wall, and you know, I think the, a picture is worth a thousand words, and that was a bad picture.
Yeah, I think that picture, I think that picture was really helpful.
Yeah.
Commissioner Davis?
So that was one of the questions I had. It's not just the way it looks, it's the height and the size of it. I mean, it's, it's, it rises almost to the roofline of the house, unless your rendering is inaccurate. So is there any way to make it more level and lower and still satisfy the weight requirement of the fire truck? That is another question that I had, and maybe it involves some grading. But the other thing is that it's all to the one side. The other, the other property, 171, I believe it is, has all this, what, 12 feet, and it's, it's all weighted towards 125.
Well, it's actually-
And is there any way to avoid that?
It's actually a cut and fill, right? So there is a wall on the left side, and there is a fill, there's a cut wall on the left side and a fill wall on the right side. Can we drop the driveway? Probably, but the retaining walls will get substantially taller. So right now, at the end of the driveway, we have a 14-foot retaining wall. If we lower the driveway anymore to flatten that slope, we end up with a 20, 25-foot retaining wall.
On the north side?
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I mean, even like allowing, Director Dr. Graves, I'm looking at you now, even like allowing for like a 12-inch planting strip that allows vines to go up the sides of the retaining walls for the neighbors, like, I just, I like, I, I get it, you have to be able to use and enjoy your property. There's no other access into your property. Like, I, I get what you're up against, but there's got to be a better, there's got to be a better way.
Can I throw one?
Please.
Can I ask the city attorney a, a question here? It's my understanding, if you have a landlocked lot, which this would be without this driveway, there's a legal requirement for one of your neighbors to grant you an easement so you can gain access to your lot. Is that a?
So they technically own that lot. They actually own the lot, and neighbors have planting easements.
Right, right. So, so it doesn't completely apply.
Mm-hmm.
But basically, the part that does make sense for this project is they have a right to have access to their property, even if it's landlocked. So we've got to give them a driveway, whether it's attractive, ugly, or?
Oh, yeah, they have the right to enjoy their property.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
That's correct.
That my understanding of the law was correct.
You're right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions that came out of the, I'm just looking at my notes. Any other questions that came out of the community comments? Is there pile driving? Did I get that right?
Is there a what?
Is there pile driving?
No, it's going to be drill peers.
Drill peers, okay. And the vault, like, the acoustic difference in that is substantial?
Oh, substantial. Pile driving is very noisy. Drilling, I mean, there will be an excavator with a drill on it, but it's not even comparable.
Okay, I think that's an important nuance, so I wanted to make sure that we had that for the record. Okay, any other questions, community, not community, any other questions for Mr. Chavaria, Commissioner Godwin, and then Commissioner Ferguson?
What is the tallest retaining wall that you're proposing on the project?
14 foot, six inches.
14 foot is the tallest. And that's?
14 six, so.
Where is that one?
On the northeast corner, where the driveway, where the end of the hammerhead goes.
Kind of, yeah, into the driveway.
The end of the hammerhead, not on the driveway?
Not on the driveway. It's at, at the very eastern corner of the property.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Godwin?
Nope, I'm out of questions. Yeah, just as a, as a point of public interest, I, I think the neighbors and some of the callers might do well to review page 71 and 72 of the packet, which include extensive conditions of approval. Most of these come from our original meeting on this project a year ago, or almost a year ago. And, and understand that these all have to be met before any kind of occupancy of the building. So a lot of the assurances you're looking for are, are contained in that language there and are very much required of this project. Circling back to the turf block question, I couldn't say because I've never specifically installed turf blocks as a fire lane, but I did find a number of products that seem to be specifically designed as fire lanes and marketed as such. Just, I don't see any to make this specific condition of approval. It seems to me that this would be desirable to everybody, the fire department, the applicant, and the neighbors. If, I mean, I'm just asking to do a little research and see if there's some feasible way to do that. I'm sure that the applicant, the, the future homeowner would prefer a driveway that looked nicer than the one that we've seen as a rendering. It may just be a simple rendering to show the grade level or whatever, and we didn't, we didn't apply that filter, but just asking as a member of the community, right? The better it looks, the better everyone's going to feel about it.
Thanks, Commissioner Ferguson. Any other questions for Mr. Chavaria before we let him sit down?
Can you explain turf block to me? It's a new term.
Yes.
That I'm unfamiliar with.
I, I can, or?
There's a very wide range of products. The most familiar, you'd probably think is like a, they look like crosshatched concrete with little squares in the middle, and you can have either pebbles or grass or some native planting that permeates through. So you have a impermeable surface that functions as a driveway, right? It's aesthetically pleasing.
It's pervious, so it's, it's essentially pavers with holes in it, whereas-
And underneath, you have a compacted, either engineered subgrade or some sort of native fill.
Yeah, they're still, it's still consubport, so it can flow through, right, which is only appropriate on non-clay soils, so the geotech would have to review it. But the, the point of it is, it's aesthetically pleasing if it's well maintained. And then it allows for this to be a greener driveway, like the color green because of plants, rather than?
It's also often used to reduce the size of bio retention basins.
Yeah.
Because it, in and of itself can drain water through. because it, in and of itself, can drain water through.
And you can get a seventy thousand pound fire truck to drive on it without having all sorts of issues.
But didn't Javier say that it can't be on a slope?
We're gonna look at-
You didn't want me to say that, did you?
We're gonna, no, I mean, Mr. Chavaria said it. Alex is for Googling.
Yeah.
Like, we're gonna find a solution that I think everyone gets comfortable with, and I think what we will do is we'll add a condition that just encourages you guys to work together to see if there's something that can come out. Anything else for Javier?
One, one more.
Quick one, if I may.
We can call him back, but just for now.
Thank you, Chair. Real quick, just, you said there are backup systems for the pumps, for the retention tanks. That's a dual-pump system, I believe, correct?
Yes.
And you have a battery backup system and a gasoline generator system. Is there, or I didn't see it in the conditions of approval, a maintenance program for that? That's, that's my business. So, you know, once a month, run the generator, obviously, check the batteries. They're probably not gonna be LI, they're probably gonna be a wet cell battery, I'm assuming. So, just a maintenance issue. So, when they work, we want them to work.
Absolutely. In, in all the homes that we design, we recommend to the homeowner and to the contractor, and we help them prepare a building manual. Because not only that component, I mean, your furnace, your heat pump, all the different components that nowadays are common in homes require periodic attention when the roof needs to be done. And some homeowners are very savvy, some others are very new. So, we have made that our practice to create an initial manual that the general contractor finishes completing so that the homeowner have that. So, yes, it is our intent to have in that manual a maintenance program for the drainage system.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
We may have more questions for you. So, now, do folks want to deliberate?
Sure.
Commissioner Davis, wanna kick us off?
No.
So, I, I do wanna say that, you know, it's hard to sit up here and listen to two very good points on the same thing. And I think what you're hearing in a very technical format, and I'm saying this to the community, because sometimes I feel like we leave, and we've had these conversations, and no one understands what we just talked about. But I think what we're trying to do now is create a system of rules that will be recorded on the project as conditions of approval. They'll be part of the legally adopted resolution if this project moves forward that gives the assurances on all the different things that have been discussed. So, grading, stormwater, whether there's bonds, you know, whether there's easements, all of the things that we're talking about. So, I think we're at the point where we'll now kind of discuss how we wanna see this project move forward, if we wanna see this project move forward. And what I wanna say is, I really appreciate that this is a hard process. It is hard for a single-family home to go through, I mean, you said 2018. This project has been in the works for almost eight years for one house. That's really hard. And I think I was not prepared at the last meeting to make a decision, because I didn't feel like safety and geotechnical, and I didn't feel like a lot of stuff had been considered. And I think that there was a lot of work that was done by the applicant, and I think staff wrote a really good staff report, and I really appreciate that. So, I, for one, with a series of COAs that I would like to go through at the end, I, for one, feel like I'm ready to support this project personally.
I'm ready to support it with a handful of conditions in addition to what's on seventy-one, seventy-two that came up through the meeting.
Yeah. I see a thumbs up from Commissioner Redfield, a smile from Commissioner Davis. I don't know what that means. If no one has other comments, I'm gonna go into COAs, so...
So, and I do have input on COAs, but I do, I am struggling with something. So, I'm on, I'm on the retaining wall on this one. So, this is where I'm struggling, is there's a finding in here, and, and I know what the explanation might be. And I would also comment that, yeah, Calera Terrace was created in 1908. So, was the access driveway. It all was, right? That the proposed development as set forth on the plans will unreasonably restrict or cut out light and air on the property and, and on another property in the neighborhood, or will hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of land and buildings in the neighborhood, or impair the value thereof. So, I'm having a little bit of a hard time with that one, just full transparency, so...
I, I hear you, and I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Commissioner, Director Updike to comment, but I will say, the setbacks that are shown in these plans are larger than what's required by our municipal code.
It wasn't clear. I completely get it with the setbacks.
Yeah.
It's the driveway. And I know it probably doesn't even apply to the driveway, but that doesn't mean in the core of my being and my own personal values that I don't consider that for other people.
Yeah. I, I agree with that.
It is at least on the north side of the structure, so it's, it's never going to impede direct sunlight to that.
I looked at the shadows. Yep, anyway, that's where I'm at. But let's do the COAs, for sure, 'cause I've wanted to-
Okay. Okay. I have been taking a list of what we've been talking about. Would anyone like to add things that we haven't talked about, and that we can go over to Director Yip and Director Updike?
If you got a good list, why don't you read it out, and I'll jump in if I've got one that you missed.
Okay.
I would concur on that.
Okay. Commissioner Redfield, Commissioner Godwin, I see no-
That's, that's fine.
All right. So, Commissioner Up, um, I'm sorry, Director Updike, I'm having a real problem with names today. Would you like to start with what you referenced at the beginning of the meeting?
Yes, thank you, Chair Hauser. We're gonna put up on the screen. Can it show on here to you? Is that possible? Why, turn it on?
It's, it's working for us.
I can't read it.
Ah, that's a problem.
So, I'm so sorry about that. Can I just scoot on that to your spot? We're gonna share. So, Deputy Director, Yip and I have prepared some conditions that reflect standard, reflect some of the standard conditions that we might have on other projects for consideration. Condition seventeen, I'm sorry that I didn't print that. It's on, I believe, packet page seventy-three. Is a building division condition that talks about compliance with the geotechnical recommendations. And so, staff recommends adding, uh, condition seventeen A and B, that the, again, to get at that, special inspections that the commission talked about, that the applicant shall retain a California licensed geotech engineer to provide all required geotechnical review, observation, and testing during grading, excavation, and foundation construction. A letter from the geotechnical engineer confirming review and approval of the project plans shall be submitted prior to issuance of any grading or building permit. And B, the contractor shall provide the geotechnical engineer and the city a minimum of forty-eight hours' notice prior to any earthwork, subdrain installation, or drilled pier operations.
I think that this is a good condition. I would like to add retaining walls into this list. And then I would also like to add, maybe two tracks. A condition that I have standard when I do grading projects professionally. So, the one that I think is missing is, prior to occupancy of the building, the applicant shall submit a certification by the geotechnical engineer of record confirming that all work has been completed in substantial conformance with the recommendation in the soils investigation and geotechnical report.
That was in there. I wonder if I just didn't copy it over.
It might be below. I just, I think, I think that-
Yeah, I think, I'm so sorry. I think we did have that, and then I think I just-
Can we bring the house lights down a little? Someone just put a spotlight on for-
I melt.
I just can't, I can't read what's in front of me anymore.
So-
Not that one.
I thought I had it.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you so much. And I can reread that, Director Updike, if that's helpful. I see not, yeah, okay. So, prior to occupancy of the building, the applicant shall submit a certification-
Hold on.
Sorry. The applicant shall submit a certification by the geotechnical engineer of record confirming that all work has been completed in substantial- Yeah, that all work has been completed in substantial conformance with the recommendations in the soils investigation slash geotechnical report. Alex, struggling.
You, your geotechnical engineer of record, I don't think will be the person designing your biotension basins, but I could be wrong about that, or at least some part of them?
I don't think-
Who's doing the flow analysis? I had a separate note here.
That's a civil engineer.
Right.
So, that's a separate condition.
Got it.
And that's, I think, I see the very top of the word-
Got it.
-hydraulic calculations in the next one, so-
That was the part I wanted to tie on.
Yeah.
Chair?
Part of the application to submit certification by the general contractor to confirm that all work has been completed in substantial conformance with the soils investigation slash geotechnical report. Yes?
If I may, and I recall reading in the GEO report in regards to seventeen-B, I believe that the, I can't remember the, the name of the company, but they recommended seventy-two hours as far as notice, thank you.
Oh, you should absolutely-
As far as having someone on site, as far as one of their engineers.
Go with the geotechnical reports' recommendations.
Just putting it, you know-
I don't think any, I think the applicant would love to give the geotechnical. I mean, like, they need them to come, so-
Yes, before I, yeah, there we go. I think it was just a little more warning before any of the, obviously, items listed.
Okay.
We've updated that to a minimum of seventy-two hours to align with the geotech report.
I think this is a good, a good condition of approval, and I appreciate that the occupancy of the home hinges on being consistent, and that is an assurance that will impact the property owner in a big way.
We had, also had a couple related to stormwater. And again, I think a lot of our conditions already cover this, but this, I think, is providing those additional assurances.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what numbers they should be, so we'll, we'll figure out the right place to put them in. But hydraulic, hydraulic calculations, along with a letter from the engineer of record indicating the proposed storm drain system does not increase runoff above the pre-development condition, shall be submitted for review and approval by the city engineer. The onsite drainage system shall be designed to detain onsite all flows in excess of the existing flows during a one-hundred-year frequency storm. The detention basin shall be designed to detain water only during peak flows. Prior to the issuance of any building permits, the applicant shall submit a pre-construction video survey documenting all existing site conditions and all public improvements along the project frontage, including but not limited to pavement, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, driveways, drainage structures, utility boxes, adjacent landscaping, and any other visible surface features. The video survey shall be submitted electronically to the city engineer for review and acceptance prior to permit issuance.
I think that's missing the follow-on sentence. That would say something along the lines of, any damage to city streets caused by the project shall be repaired by the applicant at the applicant's expense. And if, Mr. Yip, you're amenable to it, I think we should give the applicant the op, the option between a photo survey and the video survey?
I think there's an existing condition related to that.
That's standard, and this is it? Okay, let's do that.
So, we can, we can double-check that.
Okay, does anyone have comments on this condition of approval? Okay, Mr. Chavaria, I'm assuming you're amenable to this condition? You'll fix what you break? Yeah, okay. Please.
Regarding the drainage, we may want to, can we scroll up to the drainage condition?
Yes, we wanna make sure you could build the project as conditioned. Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, I think detention basins, I, I just wanna be proper here. We may put detention basins slash bio swells flow-through planters, because they all kind of serve the same purpose, but if we only put detention bases, that would be like a little pond to hold water there without overflows, without all the other elements.
Why don't we say the detention systems?
There we go.
Roland, is that okay?
Yes, so Javier, this, this one need to be reviewed during the design. So, the bioretention areas have a limited infiltration rate. They're typically, are a small area relative to your pervious. So, we're, we're gonna be reviewing that to make sure that your, your infiltration rate of the bioretention area satisfies what we need, 'cause that's gonna be the limiting factor here.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that the wording there was in-
I wholly appreciate, yeah, you don't wanna be restricted into something that you can't meet. Okay. Anything on the air quality? Do we have one for air quality?
If I may, go back to the second condition about the pre-constructions video survey?
Yes.
So, on packet page seventy-three, condition nineteen, nineteen-C includes, existing public improvements within the property frontage that are damaged or displaced shall be repaired or replaced as determined by the city engineer, even if damage or displacement occurred prior to any work performed for this project. Any damage to improvements within the city right-of-way or to any private property, whether adjacent to the subject property or not, that is determined by the city engineer to have resulted from construction activities related to the project, shall be repaired and replaced as directed by the city engineer.
I think that's fine. I still think that we need the language on the video survey. What I'm not loving about this condition, and forgive me if I'm missing something, but the first sentence, existing public improvements within the property frontage, that frontage is like twenty feet, that are damaged or displaced. Like, I, I think the first sentence and the second sentence are intended to be separate, but it's confusing.
Struggling with the second half of the first sentence, too, you have damage occurred prior to any work performed for this project.
I think what it's saying is, like, this is for projects with larger frontages, where they're not, where they're leaving some sidewalk in place, and if there's a, I think it's not applicable to this property.
I agree.
And it's confusing because of this property. I mean, Director Updike, if Director Yip is amenable to it, I'd like to keep what you wrote on the screen, or some version of it.
Deputy Director Yip, could you please weigh in?
Yeah, if I may, I think the concern is with Bayview and Rockway, and we can just specify the limits and replace the project frontage with the limits of Bayview and Rockway that's appropriate.
I think that makes sense. But I still think we need the photo or the video survey.
And could you repeat what the change is to the condition that's on the screen, please? Just, I wanna make sure we capture it correctly.
Any damage to, I think, I think Director, yeah, but you said, any damage to Bayview or Rockaway caused by the project shall be repaired by the applicant's expense? I think you're just naming the streets.
So, naming the streets, thank you. Okay. Maybe, I think so. We can look it up, we can fix it. It is Rockway. Okay, and then the third, maybe Road. The third is, the applicant shall prepare a dust control plan conforming to the city's standards and complying with the requirements of the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, best management practices for dust control prior to the issuance of any building or grading permit. The applicant shall post a publicly visible sign with a telephone number and person to contact regarding dust complaints. This person shall respond and take corrective action within forty-eight hours.
I think that's a great condition. Any comments on this? Commissioner Redfield, I feel like this is like your bailiwick. Or Commissioner Ferguson, are you good?
No, I'm happy with it.
Okay. Happy is good. All right, let's keep checking.
Those are all the conditions that staff has prepared.
Perfect. So I had on the list for twenty-nine, which says applicant shall provide an operations and maintenance plan and maintenance agreement for the stormwater treatment measures. I think what we would add there is to be inspected at an appropriate interval to be determined by the city engineer.
The condition is applicant shall provide an operations and maintenance plan and maintenance agreement for the stormwater measures.
And then to be inspected. At a, at an interval to be determined by the city engineer.
When you're talking about inspection, it's the inspection of the existing improvements and how it's functioning?
The city has required a stormwater, an ongoing stormwater maintenance plan. And typically, those require annual inspection, but in this case, the city engineer can determine what the appropriate interval is.
To allow more frequent?
I believe it's fewer than annual is what Director Yip said for a system this small.
Okay. I think we would want to be as specific as possible.
Do you have a recommendation for how to clarify that? To, so that we capture it correctly? Deputy Director Yip, do you have any recommendations?
I suggest biannually.
Chair?
Yes, please.
Would that be that inspection, that is a physical inspection of the actual things? Is that a fee-based inspection?
I, I think typically, there's a third party that comes out that you do pay to do that, but it's minimal.
Yeah.
And it's to make, it's to certify that there's no trash or siltation.
Third, third party, I could see, obviously, being a
I think it's however the city engineer, yeah, however the city engineer wants to do it. I think we leave it to staff to describe, but I want to make sure that it's covered so that everyone's on the same page.
Okay, so the proposal then would be to leave to be inspected at an interval to be determined by the city engineer, and then that's level of detail will be addressed in the plan itself.
Yes, in the actual agreement.
Yeah, I think he suggested biannually.
Sorry. I was going to propose slight language added to the existing language. Applicant shall provide an operation and maintenance plans and maintenance agreement for the storm treatment measures prior to issuance of any building permit or grading permit. I think we need some timing there.
I agree.
And then, and then we can
So just at the beginning, so applicant.
And I would say because it's stormwater, I would say prior to issuance of a grading permit.
The, at least submission of a draft plan for the agreement for city review should happen before the building permit or grading permit is issued, and then I think the final executed is prior to occupancy.
For stormwater treatment measures. Staff, here, ready?
I'm sorry, I see. It's behind my computer. Sorry, Kayla.
Yeah, sorry, my my PDF is crashing. Okay.
I think.
So agreement for prior, would you say, you said prior to issuance of a grading or building permit?
Yeah, but that's the draft, and then final executed plan needs to happen before the execution.
Before occupancy.
Yeah, sorry, occupancy.
Okay, so I would do agreement for stormwater measures, period. Or, or that's fine, too. Yeah, and then draft agreement, or sorry, yeah, draft agreement to be provided prior to issuance of a grading or building permit, and final required prior to occupancy. But now what happens to our to be inspected at an interval determined by the city engineer?
I would just say after measures, why can't, after measures, I would say, including language specifying that treatment measures shall be inspected, blah, 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 blah. So I would put it after measures, otherwise it doesn't make sense.
Yeah. I want to thank Ms. Snodgrass for her live typing.
I'm like really having
It's hard.
You're doing great. Okay, so applicant shall provide an operations and maintenance plan and maintenance agreement for the stormwater treatment measures. And then after measures, I put a comma which shall specify that measure shall be then inspected at an interval to be determined, blah, blah, blah. I think that's perfect. Anybody have comments?
Should say specify, not specific. Sorry.
That was a real Frankenstein sentence we just made.
What was that?
It said it was a real Frankenstein sentence that we just put together.
I think it's perfect. So I think that brings us to kind of the more complicated ones, where we're going to need help from the city attorney in drafting. The first one, where we have a nexus-level tract agreement, so that, that's one where I think if you want to suggest language. But I think what we need to, I think what we need to make sure here, staff, is that we don't be, like, this is not a site that's safe to run out of money on. So it has to be safe.
Yeah, can we take a recess? I think we'll have to think, because this is a single-family project, and those kind of conditions are rare for a single-family project, so I need to think.
I think that makes sense. And then while, I think, before we take the recess, maybe we move on to the language on the driveway, and just that the applicant and staff shall make a good faith effort to find a more aesthetically pleasing
Could we specify planning?
And fire, yeah.
And fire. Because we want to, we, we need to make sure that it meets all the applicable standards.
And I, I think you're going to need to include engineering in this as well because of the C-three, C-six components.
Thank you for that.
So she'll make a good faith effort to redesign the project driveway to be more aesthetically pleasing and still meet I, I, I don't know. You guys can wordsmith, but I think that's the march.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's what we want to say, right?
It's pretty clear.
Language work. I'm still checking in with you, Javier. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
How about less, drive to be more aesthetically pleasing and lessen the impact on adjacent properties? No? Too much?
One of the things that we want to just be cautious of are interjecting subjective standards that we can't apply to the project. I think in this case, it is you know, written in such a way that it's not, it's like, it's a recommendation. You know, so that, that may be okay, given the
Well, and I think the, I think the important thing that I'm noting again for the record, I'm going to look at you, Mr. Chavrea, when I say it to make sure I'm not putting words in your mouth, but I think the applicant has agreed to do this, and that's a very important nuance. Is that, am I accurately? Okay, so, so Mr. Chavrea stated for the record that he has no objections.
We, yeah, you could start the sentence with, planning commission recommends that.
Well, I, I think, I think I'm personally happy with the way this is written right now, but I want to make sure the city attorney is happy with it, because I see
The language as
As it stands is fine.
Now is fine.
Perfect.
But if we add the language about.
No, let's not. You've preserved, you've preserved your comments for the record, Sher Davis.
We want it to look pretty, but we don't care if it affects other people's quality of life.
Okay. So at this point, I think we'll take a recess. How long would staff like to have?
Ten minutes, please.
It is now nine twenty-three. We will reconvene at nine thirty-three. Thank you. So, I see you rewriting 29.
I'll wait for Katie to type my edits.
Okay. I actually think that that is a huge improvement and comports with what I've seen on, I think, I think that's a huge improvement.
Okay.
And well-written, does anyone have any questions or concerns?
It says, prior to the building permit issuance of a grading or building permit, I think that first building permit needs to come out. Yeah, there you go.
I think that was supposed to say building department, but either way, I think it's fine as is. I don't think you need to specify department.
Chair Hauser, I think we need to read the language into the record.
Okay, so I'll read it. Applicant shall provide an operations and maintenance plan and maintenance agreement for the stormwater treatment measures, which shall specify that measures shall be inspected at an interval to be determined by the city engineer. The draft agreement shall be recorded against the property prior to the issuance of a grading or building permit. The agreement shall include provisions that allow the city to perform maintenance, if not performed by the owner, with such costs to be a lien on the property, if not promptly reimbursed by owner. Does anyone have questions for staff? Okay.
Nicely done.
Okay. So, shall we go back to the one Commissioner Davis that you wanted clarification on for the driveway?
No.
No, okay. But that's...
Thank you for asking.
Okay. Okay. So what do we want to do about the tract agreement?
Unfortunately, any kind of long-term bonding requirement may run into nexus issue, hence the alternate proposal.
Any, I'm sorry, can you speak into the microphone?
Ah, sorry. So unfortunately, because it's a single-family project, any kind of long-term bonding requirement is likely to run into nexus, is very likely to run into nexus issues. Plus, it's harder to go, to go against the bond measure and imposing the lien, and then recouping the cost through tax rule is more easier for the city.
Oh, sure, okay, I think we're seeing, I think there are two different things at issue. I think that there's condition 29, which was a condition about stormwater treatment measures.
Uh huh.
Right, and that's, I think that's perfect as, as city attorney's office has drafted. And I think all the commissioners nodded at that. I think what we are asking, which would be typical for a grading operation on a sloped site this size, is that there's some level of guardrails that the applicant does not run out of money and leave an unsafe situation that would cause an issue to public health and safety. And so I think what we're trying to do is make sure that some level of standard condition of approval, some, like, it should not, to your point, be above a nexus, it has to have a nexus, right? But if, for example, the story poles that we were talking about would have been an unsafe scenario according to the applicant. So if the applicant starts grading and runs out of money mid-retaining wall, which is not totally unheard of, right? What happens? And in a situation like this, typically, there is an agreement or some sort of, like, the same sort of intervention where the city can come in and make it safe, and then the applicant would promptly reimburse, or there'd be a lien. However you want to do it, it just has to cover that scenario. These are not inexpensive improvements.
So when we are talking about, this is more for geotechnical improvements rather than stormwater.
Right.
Sorry, I thought you wanted bonding just for stormwater requirement.
They're sort of inextricable, but, yeah.
Yeah, but I, like, I think both are, like, I think that what you wrote was an improvement to a condition, but I think...
But it doesn't address the issue of liability mid-construction, yeah.
Right.
Chair, are you talking like a surety bond or a completion bond type of scenario?
Right, or, yeah, exactly, something that...
Just assures the project's not left yet.
Yeah, this is, this is millions of dollars of retaining walls and home and whatever.
Serious hazard if not completed, yeah.
Right.
Right, it can't be left unsafe.
It can't be left unsafe. And there's, there are very standard conditions of approval that all cities have, and I'm sure we have something like this.
How have we dealt with development in HPD zone before? Have we not done this?
No, we, we have, it's just not, it's just not on these conditions yet, so we just need to add something.
Right, I feel like we've done this exact thing.
Right, the difference is that when it's, to city attorney's point, when it's a subdivision with multiple houses, it's much easier to do a large agreement.
I got that. We've done a couple of single-family HPD houses, though, and I can't imagine we did that with, I remember discussing this...
The Talbot House was one.
Yeah.
Sure, we did something.
I don't think they've broken ground on that yet. Is this the last condition?
Yes. That is on the list that we...
There's nothing else, there's nothing else for us to do while we, while this discussion goes on?
That's a great question. Does anybody have anything else that they wish to talk about? This is the last condition I have on the list, and while staff is drafting it. I'm gonna run down the list, Commissioner Ferguson, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
I have nothing, Commissioner Godwin?
I've got nothing.
Commissioner Redfield? Commissioner Davis? Okay, so this, this is the last.
I am in support of this condition, well, if we can, or however we can, including it.
Yeah, agree.
I guess as a note to staff while you work, if we could, I know this is on the fly, but I'm sure that this will come up again. So if we could come up with some sort of standard condition for this situation, with given more time and attention in the future?
Yeah, I, I think that we actually need to research the building code provisions, because I think these standards are in the building code. And I just, I, I don't have that information tonight, I would have to, I would want, need to consult with our building official.
Chair, are you okay with having staff discretion on this one condition? If we can outline the direction?
I mean, I think what we can do, go ahead, Commissioner Davis.
Didn't you have an example from your professional experience that you brought?
The projects that I work on are much bigger, and what the city attorney's office has indicated is there's not a proper nexus, which I concur with.
Okay.
I do, I do have some standard language from the internet, but I appreciate what the director is saying about the building official. Is there nothing in the municipal code that covers this situation?
I, I would need to research Pacifica's local building code amendments, as well as the, just California building code. I don't know if we have anything specific in our, in our local amendments.
So could you give me in lay language, Chair, what we're trying to say here? Clarify that.
I'm just doing a quick look through the building code. At bond requirements outside of the subdivision chapter. I, I wonder if Section 8-1.17 is applicable. "Section J103.1 of Appendix J of the CBC shall be amended to read as follows," and then it goes through "Permits Required." And then E says, "When determined by the building official that a bond is required in order to ensure that work will be completed in accordance with the approved plan specifications and conditions of approval, due to nature, location, time of year, or amount of work to be done, such bonds shall be in conformance with the City of Pacifica Administrative Policy Number 48. Surety bonds, cash bonds, instruments of credit, or other forms of security shall comply with the provisions of City of Pacifica Administrative Policy Number 48," which looks like it is from a January 1, 2023 ordinance update.
I, I don't think this is something that we can do from the DICE. I, I believe that we need to consult the building official, and that the City Attorney's Office needs to review if we're considering adding a bond requirement to a single-family.
Well, I don't want to delay the applicant. I don't think that's fair. And I don't want to leave this unaddressed. I don't think that's fair. So we need to figure out a Band-Aid solution.
Can, can we use cash?
No, that's, I don't want to do that. I think that's the same, it's, it's worse.
Okay.
It's more expensive. So why don't we create a condition that is then subject to the review and approval by, of the building official?
And what section were you in? 8-1?
I was in 8-1.17, but it sounds like there is a lack of comfort on doing that on the fly, which is understandable.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm gonna propose something, Director Updike. What if we say something like, unless otherwise approved by the building official and the city engineer, "Prior to issuance of any grading or building permit involving grading, retaining walls, or slope disturbance, the applicant shall provide a performance bond or other city-approved security at an amount to be determined by the city engineer."
Yeah, we, we are concerned, we are concerned about having to come back to amend conditions after we've done the proper research and legal vetting.
So what we're trying to do is provide a vehicle by which staff can make this decision after the fact. But I don't think, I don't think we're going to want to continue this, and I don't think we're gonna want to proceed without a vehicle for staff to do this analysis.
Did you type that language? Um, let- Chair Hauser, if you could repeat it, maybe, let's have Katie put it up on the, the screen so that we can, we're all looking at the same thing.
Okay, I'm gonna try to remember what I said. "Subject to the review and approval by the building official and the city engineer," comma, "prior to issuance of any grading or building permit involving grading, comma, retaining walls, comma, or slope disturbance, the applicant shall provide a security to be determined by the city engineer."
Shouldn't you say amount in there somewhere?
Sure.
The security in an amount to be determined.
Well, if we say in an amount, then we don't give staff the ability to do the analysis that they're trying to do.
Intentionally said.
What if we change it, I'm like trying to overhear your conversation. What if we change it to say, "If required by the building official or the city engineer," comma?
Yeah, and we're also thinking if we need to tie it to the building code requirements. The thing is-
Aren't all building code requirements kind of included by reference as a-
Yeah, but if, so my-
You're required to comply with the building code anyways.
My concern is if we are requiring them to provide security for a single-family home, but we've not asked other projects in similar situation in the past.
I think the mistake is equating this single-family home to a 5,000-square-foot typical Pacifica single-family home, because this is a sloped lot, it's a flag lot, it's 26,000 square feet. It's not like any other lot in this neighborhood, right? So we're trying to give, I, like, we, I think what I'm saying is I trust staff and staff's discretion to after this meeting. Like, what I'm trying to do is make sure that the applicant doesn't have to come back to us.
I understand. I'm trying to add certain limits to the discretion here, so that we're not asking my, above and beyond what are the constitutional requirements there, so I'm trying to just see if we can fro, because if appendix, unfortunately, I, I haven't looked into Appendix J's. I'm not sure if it applies to single-family homes and other things, because if that applies, we can just refer to the building code language. My concern is that by just requiring them to provide any kind of security when we are not requiring for similarly situated projects elsewhere in the city, if we are creating some issues.
I, I can't think of a comparable project that we've looked at in the last six years.
Right. I mean, this is, this is, the code reference that this is being tied to, taking J out of it, is section, is, is Chapter 1, so Title 8, Chapter 1, which is just called building code. And it's all about the adoption of the California building code. It doesn't have any-
It does amend, but, but ours amend certain sections of the building code, so it is tied, yeah, to specific sections.
Right. So what's the solution?
So, yeah, this is, I'm kind of loathe to rely on AI research. Because this is, yeah, I, this is just on the fly, because if it does apply to PCT, then I mean, if it does apply to a family, then this is, but if it doesn't- I wouldn't trust it. I, I don't want to, I just, I, this is a shock. The building codes are not the easiest to read on this thing, so.
Right, like, security's not, right?
Yeah, yeah. We just say security, uh, just. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I think. No, because that leaves, that leaves us some discretion to change the condition, and we don't want that.
So just to keep this moving, I think, I think the nexus here is an important question. But the bond is for grading, right? It's not a single-family home bond, and it's for public safety.
I think we need to add some standard language, security to ensure what? So that's not there. Safety can be anything. Can we ask them to do bonding for safety of the fence? Like, we need more specific language.
Sure, so landslide risk, erosion into public right-of-way, sedimentation of storm drains, failure of retaining walls impacting adjacent parcels, and unstable slopes posing danger to downhill neighbors or city property are what's on the list that I'm finding in Government Code Section 53,000.
What was the Government Code section being referenced?
53000.
And what is that for?
Would you guys like to take another recess?
Sure.
Okay. We'll take a 10-minute recess until 10:15. So I'm, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that I'm clear. Is staff, staff is recommending we add two conditions?
We need to reconvene and wait for-
Okay. Sorry, we were waiting for the PCTV. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh. Okay. And we need to reconvene.
Thank you, she did reconvene.
Oh, sorry, my bad. Yes, so, um, above, the first bullet point is what you proposed, and then the bullet point below is what we're proposing. We're actually requiring an improvement agreement, because that gives us some, staff some more leeway to negotiate and change things that are required as part of the agreement.
Would the City Attorney's Office like me to read this into the record?
Yes. So, "Prior to the issuance of a building permit involving grading, retaining walls, or slope disturbance, the applicant shall enter into an improvement agreement with the city to require the completion of the retaining walls and other related improvements defined as retaining wall improvements, and shall provide security in an amount necessary to complete the retaining wall improvements as determined by the city engineer. The agreement shall be recorded against the property prior to the issuance of a building permit and shall be in form approved by the city attorney."
I, I appreciate the work on this, because I think for me, this meets the intent of what I was originally asking for, so I think this is a far superior condition of approval, and opening it up to the commission for any questions and comments.
Slight modification, so it says, "Prior to the issuance of building permit, it should be grading or building permit."
Perfect.
I'm happy.
I got a happy.
It works for me.
I got a works for me.
The only thing I'm seeing in the third sentence, retaining walls, shouldn't that be plural? Retaining walls?
Sure.
Uh, it's, it's retaining wall improvements, right? And, and other related improvements. Using that term.
I think it's fine as is, but I see what you're saying. Commissioner Davis?
So we're talking about grading retaining walls or slope disturbance, but then it drills down, and it's, and, and as it progresses, it's only talking about retaining walls.
It's not, it's defining the word retaining wall improvements to include the foregoing, and I think, cut.
Thank you.
Okay. I want to thank staff. This was hard, thank you. I want to thank the applicant, and I want to thank the community. I feel like we kind of discussed before we broke that this was the last item, so I'm gonna ask one more time if anyone has other items. Otherwise, I'd ask someone to make a motion incorporating the conditions of approval.
I am prepared to make a motion.
Please.
Okay, let me think about this. "I move that the planning commission finds the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQA guidelines Section 15303 and approves site development permit PSD-838-18 and tree permit TP-4-24 to construct an approximately 3,180 square foot, single-family residence with a 668 square foot, attached three-car garage and associated improvements, improvements on approximately 26,055 square foot, currently undeveloped site, assessors partial number 022-062-550, by adopting the attached resolution including conditions of approval in Exhibit A and, as read into the record by staff and the commission tonight, and incorporates all mass and testimony into the record by reference."
Before I ask for a second, does staff have any comments or issue with the motion?
No, that covered it.
Perfect. Is there a second?
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, please vote. All right, please vote.
All right, that motion was made by Commissioner Ferguson.
I didn't vote no. I didn't vote at all, actually. I never even touched a button, and it asked me yes or no. I'm gonna abstain.
We should-
Let's re-vote.
Yeah, let's re-vote.
Okay, please reset.
Because I did not, I even moved the chair back, so I wouldn't-
It's been a long night, it could have hit at any time, so let's all vote.
Right, that motion was made by Commissioner Ferguson, and it was seconded by Commissioner Redfield. That motion passes four to zero. With one abstain.
All right, thank you. Moving right along. So that concludes the item. I want to thank you again. Feel free to send any questions to city staff if there are. Thank you. Okay. So I believe we're on commission communications.
I did hear that definitively Commissioner Devine will not be able to make it tomorrow.
Okay, Commissioner Redfield, you're up. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. All right, then moving on to staff communications.
I just want to, sorry, confirm that. Commissioner Ferguson, you said that Commissioner Devine will not be available tomorrow.
She's not in town tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. And so Commissioner Redfield will be the liaison tomorrow, December 2nd, at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. Thank you. Staff have- we will have an upcoming meeting on, at our next time. I don't know why I cannot get dates correct right now.
December 15th.
December 15th. And I think Commissioner Ferguson, you shared that you would not be-
Do you have a lot on the agenda?
I think one project, but you shared that you might not-
Do you anticipate it being a late night?
No. But it's hard to say.
Probably be there.
Okay, and we'll do, we can do a poll, but just wanted to remind everyone that-
Okay.
We do have an item coming. We continued 140 Gordon Way.
Which one is it?
140 Gordon Way. To next meeting, so to December 15th.
I won't be here on the 15th.
Okay. So Commissioner Davis will not be here. So we'll make sure to poll-
Okay.
For that meeting and make sure we have-
So I think one of our commissioners has a birthday on that day.
Yeah, my little sister's visiting from the UK, and so, yeah, anyways.
Bring Your Sister to Work Day.
Oh, she's not gonna love that.
Any other staff communications?
There are no other staff communications.
All right, may I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
I second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Ferguson, seconded by Chair Hauser. That passes unanimously, and adjournment time is 10:34 PM.
Thank you.